And city contributing to that is a huge, huge thing. Beggars can't be choosers, but I think that we're talking about the educational piece too, and the amount of money that goes into the trainings and the operation of things. We would like to feel like anybody opening a business that we have something to fall back on to get started, so it might take a little longer, and that's okay. We'll figure that out.
We have so many people every year. See if we show them what they need. A warm Monday here in fact, and turn around.
Yes.
And I know that's part of our job too. One of the Agape Center, our church does support everyone here with this. It's been a big help to us. I'm in charge of our finances at the church, so people come to me, I turn them over.
Yeah.
So it has been a help to us. I think it's a good deed for our community. I like the idea. And you're talking about both these, the Agape and the Transition Center in one building?
Yes.
Both of you being together?
Yeah, yes we are. We're talking about bringing a room to them, the office area. And expanding the office area that they actually have now, so that there's room for some individual counseling. You don't have thirty-five people in one little room, you know, the size of this event. Like you said, you know how small that front room is, we put a whole lot of people in there. It's elbow-to-elbow, you don't have a lot of privacy to talk and to work like you really kind of need to. So we have enough space there at this facility to put some rooms in, to make those other areas available for individual work, individual counseling. And to be able to get the churches to understand exactly what we're about. We are different from the Agape Center, okay? The biggest piece right now is we don't have a 501(c)(3). And without that, you know, some people are hesitant to just write a check that they can't write off. So we're in the process of doing that, and we are using the Agape Center 501(c)(3) so that they can just mark a check with TLC on it and a memo line. It's a little confusing to people that you have two organizations working closely together as a unified operation community, but at the same time, we are different. And it's ratcheting it up with the poverty issues.
I think it's a good idea to keep people together too, as far as overhead.
We want the people to go through the Agape Center to be placed.
Right.
Yes. Well, they helped us a lot. I wouldn't think quite that much money, but I'd throw one for it then, one time.
Keith, I don't think a not profitable status will probably get you any more money, but if they knew the people in here, as well as I do, the people that you are, if they would've had an hard right to check. Also echo Reston Council's comments of commending, you know, plodding group or moving what they're doing. Takes a lot of time there. It is a lot of money. There's things that the city could be spending on other things, you know, things we can straighten. Or salt the sand a little time, things like that. We don't want to be stingy, I'm sure. And we're supposed to help develop, man, in bad times. And the people in here, they're all working out of kindness in their hearts. Of course, it was a pause, wasn't it, you, but I don't, but it did. But let's get back to city and county. I think the samples should be worked with the city and county together with TLC. Try to come up with something. There are twice as many people in the county as there is in the city. I don't know what the ratio is, who needs most help, maybe close to the county, close even to even, or there is a bigger percentage. I know that probably same time, both have money to help, and that's what the council's so. Desires are raised to the right, I would help with this deal. Whatever the council decides, I will support. I think the city, county, and groups work together, try to force something out. Of course, they're just going to price out there or crawl out, and want the county to match it. Hopefully, they'd be able to do more than what we can. Again, that's what I would suggest, is say down to the county and the city. Try to force something out, if that's what the council is looking for. So I would recommend a vote of support, try to work this out. I ain't throwing a dollar down out there to say, hey, can I match it? Hope this sort of make support a little more.
This is a big undertaking when it comes to discussions. I think it is important to have these kinds of discussions and be able to come to some logical, reasonable, final vote of some kind. So I think that when it comes to the county being involved, we do have plans to be able to sit with them. And I have not contacted any of you personally to discuss this issue. I'm not really politicking that way, but I do think that it is important to have these kinds of open discussions. This is a real problem.
Do you have anything else? So what do you recommend to do with the city? Pay what, discuss it with the county, or do what we want to do, and if they can actually do better? Or do nothing?
Well, I don't think we want to do anything. We're already pretty well agreed that something is important to be done. I do think that it's important that the county can do something, and hopefully they would at least. But my thought is, it is something of value, it is something that we would like to see. Not with consensus, but it's something we could think about happening. So our condition is that we say yes to it. Not cap of more than forty thousand, maybe make that a waste, more than that. We don't write the check until we see that they're making progress toward the income. But they know they've got that much to start with, they've got that, they help market that we've got this seed. Something to go to the county with and say, look.
So it's your turn.
Are you suggesting a type of motion for a conditional approval of two forty thousand dollars contingent upon receipts from the organization showing either a match from the county or individuals donating in the form of? Is that what you're? I'm trying to think of how to put in some legislative motion that you're talking about.
I guess maybe, I don't know if we have to have a... I see your point, but I'm wondering whether they can't walk out with the confidence that they have the support of the council?
Yeah.
Using that as their talking point for the county as well as other matches?
Yeah, I would probably classify that more along the two lines of a motion for a vote of support of, and pledge to the organization of forty thousand dollars.
Up to forty thousand?
Up to forty thousand dollars, assuming they can get some leeway or some movement from another entity or the county. Are you saying secure enough funds to purchase the building? I agree, I think that's probably, that way you're not actually approving it tonight, you're just saying you just have our, you have the council's approval that if you get the funds, you'll draw forty thousand in hand.
Yeah, so it's a sense of the council that you support the effort with up to an maximum of forty thousand dollars. Come back when the legislature is ready to buy the building.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Second. Any further discussion? Polls in favor, say aye.
Call vote maker. Could we have a call vote, please?
Go ahead, Chris.
Yes.
Blunt.
Yes.
Darryl.
Yes.
Darryl.
Upstaying.
Jay.
Any guesses? I'm staying on the low. Motion was made by Landis, second of the... See you soon.
We thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good call. God bless all of you.
You too, Keith. Next item on the agenda. General Cloud. Resolution for a free vote upon.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Cloud, and I'm here representing the Redevelopment Commission. I wanted to bring you up to date on the Veterans Way project, and then we also are going to request some action by the council towards the end of this presentation. So I have a very simple diagram of the project and some of the cost affiliated. I think that it will help everybody just get up to date on what's going on. So let me take a minute and pass that over. You good? You seen it? You can see it too, right? You can follow along. As you are aware, the Redevelopment Commission has been working on trying to get Veterans Way project up and going. It's been about a year in the mix that we've been working on. From the aerial, you can see the location of the proposed Veterans Way. It's broke down into two phases. There's the Phase One project and the Phase Two. Phase One has been designed a hundred percent, and we also opened bids publicly in June. We received three bids, and the last month's meeting, the low responsive responsible bidder from our engineering firm recommendation was David Mayer. You can see down there at the bottom, we have Phase One construction cost. It's a little over five point eight million. That is construction and non-construction cost together. We are proposing to fund that a hundred percent via the tax, the TIP revenues. Obviously, we're going to have to bond, but then those TIP revenues will pay back that bond. Phase Two is estimated at eight point three. We have, through the help and basically assistance and all diagrams pointing forward, Gary Murray had put together an application to NDOT, which we received, the city received that in the amount of six point seven. So the greater portion of the Phase Two will be financed with that NDOT grant, leaving the balance of about one point six for the TIP revenues to finance. So where we're at in the stream of things is we want to get started with Phase One, but in order to do that, we need to have some money on hand before we sign contracts. We had hired Umball and Associates. And this evening, Jason Simler is here to answer any questions that you may have. But basically, the task that we gave them was, okay, here's the amount of money we need. Do we have enough revenue to pay this bond back? And I took from an excerpt of the plan that Umball had presented to us at our last council meeting. That's on page two. And Jason, you may want to come on up here, and you might want to go through, but... Or I can, yes, I'm just going to let Jason go through, since they're the ones that presented the plan to us. I think he can answer the questions.
Sure, again, my name is Jason Simler. I'm with H A Umball Associates, CAPA firm out of Indianapolis. And what you have in front of you is the estimated tax increment that is being generated from the existing TIP area that the city currently has. This is based upon development that is there, currently throwing off tax increment that you're throwing collecting. So in 2014, you should collect about nine hundred sixty thousand dollars, and that's going to gradually increase to a little over a million dollars as some of those taxpayers have abatements. So anything that if you decide to go forward with this project, I think the goal is that by opening up this, there will be future development. That will be all in addition to what you're sitting here. The next column, the estimated debt service. That's based upon the terms that are being proposed from Main Source Bank. And there's already some negotiations that are being discussed with the bank. They've offered very favorable terms. They've offered up to nine point five million dollars. I say up to because they're allowing you to draw that down as you need. As Shannon said, there's still some unknowns on Phase Two. Phase One, the construction amounts are known. Phase Two is not known. But they are willing to let you borrow up to nine point five million dollars, and they're also allowing you to draw that down as you need it, which is very beneficial. Because normally, on financing things like this, you have to borrow all the amount day one. But they're letting you draw it down through August 2019, which is very, very favorable. So it's going to save you thousands of dollars in interest during that five-year period. And they're also allowing you to pay back over a twenty-year period, which you have here, at a three point two seven percent interest rate, which again, is very favorable for a twenty-year bond, and the bonds are payable just from the tax increment being generated from this area. So nothing else is being pledged towards repayment of these bonds. There's not going to be a property tax levy on the development assistance. It's just being paid from the tax increment that's generated from this area. So as you can see, based on what's there right now, it's more than enough to cover the debt service. And still allow, you know, two, three hundred thousand dollars remaining each year to help pay for the ongoing projects that you have. And I would point out, this is kind of worst-case scenario. This is...
I have a quick question for you, real quick, while you're talking about the debt service.
Sure.
Is that debt service column, assuming we borrow all nine and a half million?
Yes.
Assuming we borrow the eight and a half?
Right.
It's, I was going to say, it's the worst case, this assumes you borrow all nine and a half. So really, the first couple of years are going to be much lower than what we're currently showing here. But we want to be commercial worth.
And that, going back to that page one, the aerial, where it indicates, you know, we've got... We know the cost pretty accurately on the Phase One. Obviously, Phase Two, that's an estimate. And so that's the anticipated bond expenditure, even though it's the nine point five. We doubt if we are going to have to expend all of that. So that still leaves us like two point eight that would be remaining, but it's just there in case Phase Two comes in higher than what we anticipated. But we base the revenue off of the whole, assuming that we took the whole nine point five.
One other thing that I would add was that also, the Redevelopment Commission has the ability to pay these bonds back after changing years.
The terms that we got with the game were wonderful, so. So that's kind of where we're at in the grand scheme of things. Unless anybody has any questions, we'd like to... The Redevelopment Commission has passed the resolution to issue the bonds in the amount of nine point five, and that also, though, needs to be presented to the city council, and you would have to pass a resolution as well. But any questions prior to turning that over to Chris to talk to you about that?
Hold the interest. Is that on three, variable, or?
It's locked. Three point seven, or three point two seven for those years.
Yeah.
Just so you know, procedurally where you're at, as with any bonding, the body that's actually doing the bonding is where you pass the first resolution here. This body has to approve that bond essentially by a resolution as well. All of the documentation here was prepared by the bond council, as I recall, out of the forms of consent. And so it's something that I'm very familiar with, and this body's very familiar with. I've reviewed both resolutions here and the resolution for you guys. And they're both well drafted and meet all statutory requirements. So legally, my recommendation is to move forward. Or I should say, I have no objection to the body moving forward.
I would ask of which board?
Of the resolution portion for their signature.
That was submitted, yeah. Gary has it, and there's also submitted in our documents.
Okay.
It's a decision of the Redevelopment Commission, the resolution 2014.
Do you have a clean copy?
I've got a clean copy, just in case.
Ours have binder type bunch on them.
Okay, I think I've got...
That's the one for the redevelopment.
The thick one's the redevelopment.
You need one that looks like this.
The 2014, that people are...
The small one.
This is the one.
Yes, I do.
You write the whole bunch here.
Yes. So the resolution is number 2014 dash eleven?
Dash one, dash zero.
Dash eleven.
It's eleven for us.
Our resolution is eleven. The redevelopment is eleven.
Any further discussion or questions, counsel? See, I'm thankful to make clear that the question is charged, and you've started to make your first draw, and you want someone calculated on that draw.
I would also state, just for your own edification, within the actual language of the resolution, and I assume will be in the language of the of the documentation for the bond, is that this bond is paid for solely from the Redevelopment Commission's TIP funds, and that is nothing that would allow for a tax money to the city to be paid.
I don't see that today, so I'll clarify that. It's very simple. It can be. There's three different options that you can do as far as taxes, raising, the tax, the taxes in the TIP area passing on to the city of Greensburg. That can happen. That could happen. What are the chances of it? If we were our carry, but if a tornado would happen, you know, act both way out all the way, there's no tax money coming there for a year, it would present a bond. But because the recognition was something wrong here, this agreement is strictly on the TIP revenue and nothing else. That's what the bank has accepted those terms on. If we wanted to, we'd say me default, we don't owe anything. But if you then have your, or if you put in your, and your asset, credit will go, or your rate will go way up, your score will go down. So we would never do that. If something like this happened, what we could do, I would hope that the council or the Redevelopment Commission would be responsible, go to the bank and say, hey, let's put this out. You owe a debt, we want to satisfy it, but we're a little shy here on TIP. And you never know what the state of Indiana is going to do, because every year, it's a gamble, but representatives are going to help us weather due to us. So things could change, but if they change, hopefully, we're grandfathering on things. If not, we'll go back to the bank and we'll regret it, that's all that we'll do. We are not going to pass this on to, I can't promise, or anybody else about this administration. And myself, we'll never put this off in the backs of residents of the city of Greensburg. This is a business situation, and that's what we're going to do. That's not possible to tax pay, property tax pay residents of Greensburg, so.
We've done these bonds before, and that's the way it is with all the major projects that were undertaken. They're generally based on revenues, like whatever agency, whether it's the Florida or the sewer or other circumstances. And there's also, we're not, we're not, in terms of how this is being structured, we're not bleeding down the resources of the TIP. So that even if something should happen in one year, if there's an anomaly or somehow, there are resources there that can help sustain itself, or, as you said, maybe negotiate with the bank in a certain way how this is going to be happening over the next eighteen months, and then you're going to contract. So I don't, I agree, I don't think there's... It's not probable, not likely, it won't happen barring some unforeseen catastrophe. And then you're going to deal with the catastrophe, and all bets are off on everything. So I think that it shows sustainability with the revenues that's from there. As you said, they were worst-case scenario, so they increased the cost and probably minimized or made sure that you didn't exaggerate income. And so I think we're okay with that. I would move approval of resolution 2014 eleven.
Please, second?
Second.
Second, what was made by Landis, second by Terry Wagner. Is there any further discussion? Hearing now, by the poll, move to his position.
Blunt?
Yes.
Darryl?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Blunt?
You have a second, counsel? Next item on the agenda, Gary Murray, City Engineer. Number 2014 dash eight, rezones lots three and four in Centac Landing.
Centac Landing is a project that was approved in the county. It is in the F area, located at the northeast corner of Moscow Road and Canal 150. In exchange for a donation of right-of-way, the bank that owns lots three and four has requested that they be rezoned from R2 to B3. And that had gone in front of the Plank Commission at the last July meeting, and it comes to the use of the man's recommendation for rezoning. You should have received an aerial photograph, labeled the two lots, three and four, and kind of depicted the lots in the Centac Landing area, so. Any questions? Happy to answer.
Got a question?
Yes, sure.
This is first reading tonight.
Yes.
Is there any reason we have to hurry this?
No.
Good. Because I, basically, I prefer, if we can, to collect public, and it's published and all that, as we did with those others that were getting. And I'm sure you would have said if you had any feedback after...
There's no feedback on the urgency for this.
Yeah, well, I mean, on the previous ones we did on second reading, I, people had said there had been feedback, as you can see. But I would like to give an editor. Unless there are people with questions, I would, if it comes, as you know, from the Plank Commission. I wasn't there, but I do.
I was there, it was possible. We can answer from our positions, so. I would move to... For 2014 dash eight. Second? Any further discussion? Polls in favor or say aye?
Aye.
Polls in same sign, motion to question, yes.
Thank you.
Bridgette? 2015 budget first reading, 2015 Grand River Music School budget first reading. He wants to be separate layer in the budget. I would move to second. I want to be on top of that, and I'm voting first reading, we'll see you next week.
Okay. Just Agape tonight, but since we're doing a first reading in workshop in a couple weeks, I figured that'll give everybody a couple weeks to take a look at everything and see what everybody wants to do budget-wise. 2014 dash nine and ten are salaries. 2014 dash nine, city salaries, city budget salaries. Mayor recommended a five hundred dollar increase, a twelve hundred dollar increase for exempt employees, and then a... Oh, and five hundred for... So those will all be discussed at a budget workshop on the 18th, so two weeks from tonight. I believe that's at 6:00 PM. We usually use them across the hall or session area. Let's see, so that's selected, I don't really... So those are what salaries are. We did small increases, like 25 cents per hour on curate goal. There we have variance, then we did 50 cents. Or they'll get, they'll get, they'll get a 50 cent increase. Left on rent's the same. Police, fire, street. And then on the overall budget, that is just kind of in... It's on a separate sheet, but it's in more of an Excel format. And I just kind of put a labeling at the top of that because once we get to more of a final stage, so you've got what was approved in 2014 and what was proposed for 2015. So you have some salary totals. And I think there's a few things highlighted in there. The mayor asked Chief Stacy Chastity to maybe budget for some custodial expenses that were, they've just paid for them out of on the city side. And that we just did switch there. So you'll see some highlights on that. And then Donna also presented 2014 dash 12, which is the utility salaries. And she's got some highlights on that with the increases.
This, this last one received is 2014?
So you've got 2014 dash nine, 2014 dash 10, 11 and 12. I think they're all labeled. The one that's 2014 dash 11 is kind of in a little bit of over-often sight and what it's not, it's got...
I see 11 and 12. I don't think 12 is... You have to do it for that, so.
Um, yeah. Don't put those at your spots. It's got, right there on top.
They're not labeled.
Oh, never mind. Okay, it's on top.
He's got it on top. It's got yellow highlights.
It's just out of order.
It's got yellow highlights when we see that.
What? I see the yellow highlight. I don't see...
A note.
It's just...
It's at the very top of the...
Yeah. Way on my shelf. It's not there. I can't tell you. I can't tell you where it is or why it's not there. It is not there.
I don't...
But it is that. I wrote it.
Yeah, it's on the left. It says, "City agreed for municipal water and wastewater." Give it a look better, man.
Don't worry. It's like, it's easy enough to see.
That's so sad.
It's easy enough to see.
All right, well...
I got two.
I think everybody got a copy of the eight monster risk for schools budget. So it'll be some reading for you there if you so choose. I won't be the one providing, because maybe Mr. Finsky could have done that with you. I don't know more than you do. But I, you know, by statute, we do approve the schools' budget. So that's why, as we provided a copy with it. Really, there wasn't any really increases. Maybe just some line items lowered and raised just to kind of offset, you know, supplies versus, services and charges versus equipment. I know there's a couple of departments that didn't have anything budgeted for equipment, but yet they kind of need some equipment every now and then. So we just kind of offset some of those other categories and do some things around. But the overall budget's really just salary increases. And then I think this one is sanitation. I think those are, I think that was highlighted. That'll be on the 2014 dash 11. So the overall totals are on 2014 dash 11 for the city. And then you've got the two salary ones, the regular ones. And then you've got school budget and city utility or water and wastewater salaries.
From what we proposed, we have an idea what the DLGF is. And it's back maybe next year, so we, you know...
I met with them on the twenty, or the last Friday? Not this past Friday, but the Friday, 25th, 26th, the day that fell off. And I, based on revenues, we didn't have any... At that point, we did not get any recommendations for a ton.
And on the increase to individual department, we didn't raise anything for operating expenses.
I don't have enough projected numbers for insurance or extra. We just don't get those early enough. It's usually December when we get them. So we just try to work within, do what we can to work within what we have. So salaries would be the main increase. And then, you know, like I said, benefits, we were able to usually kind of fluctuate. I think we've got enough in there. We've been able to return some money to the general fund in the past without the penalty.
But what we require our department is to retain.
I think on the city side, we're somewhere around 5.9. I think it's terrible. You know what? These are individual.
Total of the 2015, 2014, which have a total of...
Oh, 6.1, okay. I guess the salaries after we got everything in. If you see it there, it's about second to the last page. Right for Airworks, yeah. On that 2015 column, you know, general total, 6.175.
That's the 2015?
Yes, that's 2015.
My question was, what's the full approval for?
I want to say 5.9. I don't know why that did carry over.
That's what I was...
What was approved? I think it was around 5.9.
What was approved from last year?
We made very minor cuts. I don't know. We, we budgeted much off 5.9, so 7.8 dollars.
So overall increase this year, just the salary.
Top 200, top 1. Top 200, I'll say 200. Top 200, that's right. All the...
I'm not sure if you can tell, you can tell us right away, you know, Chris.
Well, like I said, we really just did salaries. And then I think Mark did sanitation. I want to say there's an increase in operating supplies.
That's on salt.
Yeah, he was, last year we had it at 59 and he's requesting 65. So that would be a sizable increase over the month's out.
This one, the increase, place where to be increasing area.
On operating, that's the only one that was... And then, like I said, we just did a fluctuation between custodian and the fireworks budget versus the place department budget. So it's just that one to wash from the general fund total.
Move to the next round. You want to increase something in one area, take it from the other area. So any more questions, counsel?
I'll be on the 18th, is that right? 18th is so special.
No, I'm special.
That was so special, we decided to do this on a follow-up.
We did that for Jamie.
We did, yeah, Jamie was...
I'm not sure that hurt.
But the budget calendar, yeah. I'll bring that out for you, buddy. I think the one thing we may have changed almost, the overhead carrying, maybe some fluctuations on some of the areas. Monday, August 18th, and then after we... Yeah, 6:00 PM City Hall. We usually use the planning room across the hall.
I think we stated that we needed another session after that.
Yeah, it would be, um, the second one would have been somewhere around September or after your September, if you have a... Yeah. October. October's going to be secondly. Yeah, we're currently carrying in September. Well, yeah, you'll have a workshop. It's going to do on salaries and stuff like that. So they're all just proposed numbers for analysis.
Any questions, comments, counsel? If not, I've entered a motion to pass on first reading on city budget ordinances 2014 dash nine, 10, 11, and 12. If you want to do it, break.
Loop.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, oaths in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oathes same sign. Motion passes. Next item, the Gersonburg Community Schools budget first reading.
I make a motion to pass. Budget number first reading.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, oaths in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oathes same sign. Motion passes.
Real quick, I did find the total. I don't know why I didn't carry over. Why ever?
Plus six eight five.
Let's say it one more time.
5, 9, 8, 7, 4, 7, 9.
4, 7, 9.
And all update prescriptions for you for all meetings.
And what was the question? That's last year or this year?
That was what was the period last year.
Not this year, I guess. 5, 0, 6, 7, 8, 9.
What was it over this year?
6.175.
So there's the 6.175.
I'll double check that. I had some old notes regarding that. That's all for me unless there's any other questions.
Counselor Pauline, board vice report.
Won't take long. And a couple of street closings. The, on September, the 25th to the 27th, the Ford Works road closings for the Hall Festival and the Hall Festival Parade. We also approved for August 23rd, Amryne Drive being closed for a neighborhood block party. Chief Stacy Chastity came to the Ford Works asking for funds to purchase three Ford Interceptor sedans and one Ford Interceptor SUV and a loan of equipment that goes along with that. Maximum amount of 135,086 dollars. The trade-in was not figured into that amount, so it will be a little bit less than that. Were approved. And then Gary Murray presented the Veterans Way Phase Two LPA NDOT agreement for signatures. And we all signed that with a smile.
Scott, throw a whistle, John.
Oh, and Scott, throw a whistle.
Nice, we'll take the maxes.
Seven overhead gas thermoses that have been replaced. It's taken schematics and they will option one more.
Crude.
Anything else you need to board? Anything in the public, public like speaking? Anybody? If not, then I've entered a motion to adjourn.
Loop.